I'm trying to prep here. Welcome to St. Augustine this evening, the Mike Davis Show. We've got a great guest for you tonight, a very informative guest and one that makes Davy Hart so happy.
Oh, my heart sings with this human being. I'm very excited. Yes.
And after last week's soul crushing Tuesday show, Davy needs some uplifting heartbeat.
You did change the paradigm of that movie, sir. And it's been a running joke for like a week now.
Amanda told me I had to call and apologize to you. I just haven't done it yet.
I've just, you just thought it was a documentary? No.
I didn't know it was a documentary. I just was disappointed in the fatherly self preservation of somebody's family.
Life is beautiful. One of the greatest movies of all time. Can you imagine? Okay.
He's not gonna get nominated by me for Dad of the Year. I'm just telling you that.
Geez, oh Pete. Uncle Buck will though.
I love Uncle Buck. I thought he was awesome.
Great movie.
We're doing that movie review. We can agree on something. There's somebody who was proactive, Bug.
I love it. Love it.
All right, let's make some money before we introduce our guests. And we have a wonderful guest for you tonight. Powell Heating and Air Conditioning, they've been serving St. Augustine, St. John's County for over 39 years. Powell Heating and Air Conditioning's dedication to customer service is evident in everything they do from the moment they answer your call till the time they show up to your home. While they're working to make you feel comfortable and confident about the care and service you receive. Powell also has a fleet of over 10 trucks and a 15,000 square foot warehouse stocked with parts and equipment. They work 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. I called Dave in work leave here too. Davy, don't ask the question. They do it all 366 this year. Their number is 904-794-2665. Powell Heating and Air Conditioning. Give them a call if you live in St. Augustine. You better make friends with an AC company and Powell is a great one to have on your side.
Hey, let's step into the world of healing with Epic Behavioral Healthcare. For over 50 years, Epic has been the beacon of hope in our community, providing compassionate care for those touched by substance abuse or mental health disorders. Whether you're a kid, teen, adult, couple, or family, Epic is here to lend a helping hand. With a range of programs tailored to diverse needs, Epic offers accessible solutions for everyone. From their walk-in access center to their mobile response team and inpatient detoxification to outpatient counseling. Epic provides comprehensive care in every step of the way. We had a wonderful chat with Teresa. We love hearing about all these great programs that they have for us out there, locals. This is it. Epic Behavioral Healthcare. You need the services, they have the resources. Give them a shout today. Check them out at epicbehaviourhealthcare.org. And opening their doors in 2008, Brightway Insurance, the Casey Agency has proudly stood by their customers through hurricanes, major floods, hail, and fires. Through these events, the agency has become a much needed insurance resources in times of trouble and hardship. Honesty and integrity are the pillars of their core values, says owner Ashley Casey. We love her. We provide ourselves on being the insurance experts while developing strategies to help their clients meet their insurance needs. They absolutely do. They tailored everyone's plan accordingly. You don't pay extra, you pay for exactly what you need. They're truly enjoyable, enjoying relationships that they forged at the office as well as all over St. Augustine. Check them out today. The Brightway Insurance, the Casey Agency.
And whether you go to Moultrie Creek Diner or Anastasia Diner, these neighborhood diners are more than just a place to eat. There where hospitality blooms and friends gather, bring your own or make new ones. It's a chance for you, Davy, to make new friends. It's very hard for you. The coffee is always hot. The smiles are genuine and the food tastes like home. Every meal is a chance to make memories, share stories, and create bonds that last a lifetime. It's not just about the food on the plate, but the community that comes together at the table.
That's a truth.
Come see us at Moultrie Creek Diner or Anastasia Diner and tell them Andy sent you.
Nice.
Or that you saw this on the 904 Now Network, which is even better for everybody involved. And according to the Jackie Hurd calendar, there's no date on here, so I make up my own on those days. Today is Italian movie day.
Oh, is it?
We are honoring a fistful of dollars, one of the greatest Italian movies of all time.
I mean.
It's not over, Davy.
Life is beautiful.
It's not over, Davy.
More Italian movies. Great. Perfect.
Spaghetti westerns.
Of course, it has to be Western with you, right? You can't just have like, you know, a nice family movie. It's gotta be Western.
They're family movies.
Home Alone.
The families protected in those movies. And serving detention with us tonight, stepping in for Amanda. Clay, welcome back.
Hey, it's good to be back.
We're glad to have you at detention today with us.
Yeah.
Detention.
Yes.
Welcome to the fun show.
Yes, welcome.
This is the fun show. I enjoy the show.
It really is. There's less stress for you in the show.
There's a lot of less stress on the show.
You get to breathe a little bit. You get to be yourself. No one yells at you if you talk too long.
Well, our other shows have to run at a clip and then I'll have a lot of time for tomfoolery. So yeah, this is nice.
This show is built for tomfoolery, right Clay?
That's right.
See, Clay's right in there. All right, our guest tonight is Bethany Hilber.
Yeah.
Bethany, welcome to the show.
Hi.
You are doing something that a lot of people would applaud you for and some people would think you're crazy for. You are running for public office.
I am. I am running for public office and I think I'm getting a lot of applause and a lot of congratulations and then some condolences too.
We need good people to run. You are one of those good people. So we're very, we're very happy that you are running, you're running for school board district five.
District five.
Which those of you that watched the show last night, Vicky Oakes was on and she told us not everybody in the county gets to vote for school board five.
Right.
Where is your district?
So district five is, it's kind of wonky. I mean, all the districts are a little bit wonky, but for the most part, and you can find the maps on the supervisor of election page, if you do not know. The other easy way to figure out what your district is, is to look at your polling location because numbers determine what your district is. So district five, all the polling locations start with a five. They're in the 500s.
Oh, got it. That makes sense.
So, but district five is basically from, let's say Ocean Trace Road, like you know where Oasis is down on the island. All the way, all of St. Augustine Beach, Anastasia Island, downtown St. Augustine, uptown St. Augustine. And then it gets a little wonky after that. I have, Palencia is district five.
Oh, wow.
Goes all the way up US one. Basically, you have to look west of US one, but east of 95.
Okay.
So all the way up to 210, to the beachwalk area. So beachwalk is district five. There's a small little area west of 95, off of 210. St. John's Forest is in district five. The Markland area or International Gulf Parkway, that is west of US one, but east of 95 is district five. And then there's parts of, there's parts off of Masters Drive, everything that's east of Masters is district five also. It is, the lines are interesting. So you really have to look at it.
Right there.
I know. So the lines are really interesting. So you do have to kind of look at it. But the easiest way to do it is really look at your polling location. Your polling location will tell you exactly what district you're in.
And whoever set up your website was really good because they put a district five map on there.
They did put a district five map on there and you can zoom in. The supervisor of elections site doesn't have the street names on it. The map on my website actually does. So if you zoom into the, zoom into each part of the district, you can find the street names and that helps out too.
So can I ask you, like, you know, I know you, you're a great friend of mine and I know you do so many projects. From like, from the littles to early act and Rotary, like they do these incredible community service projects. Like, I mean, earth shattering. I mean, what was it? What was the aid for hunger? What was that?
Oh, Rise Against Hunger.
That's it. Rise Against Hunger.
At St. Augustine High School.
So all of a sudden you woke up one day like, you know what? Maybe I need a challenge. Maybe I could take it up a notch and try this.
Well, I mean, I think here's the thing. All of my community service and involvement in community service has been for my personal children. I got involved in early act and started the early act club at Katerlinus as a teacher because I wanted my kids to be more involved. I wanted them to learn about leadership. It builds confidence. You know, acts of service just kind of get you out of yourself, right?
Right, totally.
So that's why I got involved with early act. That's why I started the early act organization at Katerlinus. And then it was kind of like, well, I know I'm benefiting my own kids and now I'm benefiting other people's kids by doing this. And how can we promote this more? I, you know, I care about the students in St. John's County, just like I care about my own kids. And so I feel like it kind of has driven me to this greater calling.
Was it like a natural progression to do this, you think?
No, it was not.
It was like, okay, okay. You're like, and opportunity's here at the door.
It was, it involved a lot of consideration, you know, Patrick Kanan. He is our current, he's our current representative of district five on the school board. He has been on the school board for 12 years. He is also partner with my husband, Dan. And he and I have had lots and lots of school board conversations. Sometimes we agree, sometimes we don't agree.
But I love that about Patrick though, yeah.
I appreciate it about Patrick so much. We can have those discussions.
Yeah.
And he came to me months and months ago and said, Bethany, you know, this is something you should really consider for the future. He's like, you would be really good at this. You have a heart for service and you know, you really truly care about St. John's County School District and the students. He's like, start considering it. And so I thought about it a little bit and then, you know, and he was thinking about it. Because he, he knew he was going to be up for reelection. He knew the seat was going to be open. And he had been doing it for 12 years and you know, he kind of put a term limit on himself, right? He almost ran again and he said, you know what? No, my time is up here. It's time, it's time for, for new people to take the reins and I decided that I was that new person. So that's kind of how we transitioned into that.
In your history, you went to Flagler College.
I went to Flagler College.
Graduated Flagler College 2003?
2003 is when I graduated.
And then went into teaching. So you've been a teacher for 21 years?
20 years. So I started teaching in 2004.
Okay.
You know, at the time, I was interviewing, I was subbing for a little while, kind of getting my foot in the door, trying to figure out where I wanted to be. So, but I've been teaching for, for 20 years. This was my 20th year that I ended.
And what's the lesson that you think, having worked as a teacher that helps you on the school board, be a member of the school?
So, I mean, I think the biggest thing with that is, is that I, I'm in a unique position right now, right? So I'm a parent first. And so I understand, you know, parenting right now, I understand what parents are going through. I, you know, I want the best for my kids. And my kids means my personal kids, but also my students, right? As soon as they become yours, when you're a teacher, they're your kids. And so I want to represent them and I want to make sure that they have the best possible education. I want to make sure that they're prepared for the future, that they're ready for college. That, you know, we are sending out, you know, our students prepared. But the, the other side of that is that I, as a teacher, I know how to connect with students. I understand curriculum. I've been doing this for 20 years. I've done intensive intervention. I've done enrichment. You know, understanding what it's like in our current educational climate is really something that you need in order to really help kind of guide the school board, make some decisions.
The paradigm of students have shifted over the years too.
Really has shifted.
Like honestly, they are all very different than when, when I was in school, you know, so I get it.
Well, even, even in the past.
17 classes in one room, didn't you?
Right, exactly.
I mean, even in the past four years, since, you know, since the pandemic, things have changed. And so you really have to be actively involved in the educational climate right now to understand what's happening in schools.
Right.
And I think also to understanding what's happening with teachers right now, you know, I'm a teacher. I know, I'm at the forefront of everything that's going on in schools. I understand the challenges that teachers are facing right now, that schools are facing right now, that students are facing right now, parents are facing right now. So because of that, I think, you know, I can lend a voice that is very well rounded.
So what do you think the biggest challenges are facing our school district right now?
So with our school district currently, I think we've got some financial challenges ahead. You know, it's not a secret that Florida teachers specifically are paid 50th in the United States. That's not a secret. Everybody knows that right now that we've dropped to 50th. And that teachers in St. John's County are, you know, are not being compensated like they should be compensated. And that's a problem that needs to be fixed. But also as a teacher and somebody who currently sits on our school advisory committee at Katerlinus and has sat through stakeholder meetings at the district level. I understand that the money is not there, right? So, and I think there's something that a lot of people don't understand right now is that most recently, and why our school district is kind of dealing with some of this financial recovery or the financial situation, is that for the past two years, the government, so Congress provided school districts across the United States with ESER funds. And so, and this, this helped kind of balance the playing field for everyone, right? And it was particularly needed in Florida because of our high growth and because of the way that certain school districts, well, the way that, that the money is kind of dispersed through certain school districts, right? So we needed that money. It was only promised for two years. That money is no longer there. And that is the money that was going directly into our operations budget. Has nothing to do with the, the capital outlay budget, which is growth and building schools and things like that. Operationally, we lost money in that budget. So we really need to look at how we're spending money. We need to be financially responsible. And we need to look at our budget. We need to look at where we, where we can spend the money so that it impacts students and teachers the most. Because those are the two most important things, right?
And sustainability, I think.
And we want to be sustainable. And then we also have to think about getting boots on the ground. We have to think about, okay, we know the money is not there. We, we can start being responsible, but what else can we do? Who can we partner with? You know, I really truly believe, and through early act and Rotary, and Davy, you know this, like partnerships are so important. And communicating and talking with other people and having those conversations, like how can we get from point A to point B? And provide and find creative ways to get money into our schools.
Absolutely.
You know, so it is about having conversations. It's about, it's about working for it.
And utilizing those resources that we all know that are, that exist.
And they're there.
We just have to wake up that light in, in people. I think that that's important. Yeah, definitely.
Student population growth obviously went through the roof.
Oh, girl, yes.
2021. Has it slowed down at all?
No. It has not slowed down.
We're one of the few places probably in, not just in Florida, but in the country where you, you build a school.
Right.
And before the school is built, you're adding portables. But you haven't had the first year and you've got portables outside the school.
Right.
And it's just do the, it's just unbelievable, the amount of people that have moved here, young families that have moved here. Most of it's in the northern part of the county.
It is.
But, but how do you, thoughts on how you address that?
So some of that, I mean, and honestly, I'm not in the position right now, right? So I think that you do need to look at the budget first and foremost. We need to look and, and understanding where the money's coming from. Cause like I said earlier, the growth situation and portables and building new schools, that comes from capital outlay. And that is completely different pot of money than operating. So understanding where that money's coming from is one thing. I also think that there needs, we need to creatively look at how we are, how we are putting students in schools, because there are some schools in our district that are not overcrowded. There are some schools that have lost students because the growth in certain parts of the county isn't as big as in others.
Yeah.
So how do we look at that? How do we, how do we look at those schools and say, hmm, what are some creative things that we can do? How can we potentially make this a specialized location?
I hear your teacher hat coming on here.
Right. I have a teacher hat that comes on and sometimes too, it's, you know, like.
Like if you have 40 kids in your classroom, like what are you gonna do? You're obviously gonna do like breakout sessions or something.
And certain people, they're, you know, I get teased a lot when I start talking about it because I am very passionate about it. And they're like, you're doing too much teacher talk. Like you need to bring it back.
No, I love it.
And so like your teacher talking to me right now. And it's like, I know, I know, I know. Sorry, I'm sorry. But a lot of it is too, like, think about the way that we do our high schools, right? We have academies. We have specialized programs at every single school, every single high school. And you can apply for an academy and you can, you know, and you can go there, provided that you get in, you maintain your grades. And there's the transportation involved, right?
Right.
So why can't we start looking at that approach for some of our middle schools?
Okay.
Some of our elementary schools.
I mean, some of the schools already have that. I mean, we know Murray is like more performing, yeah.
And it's, and it's really the only middle school that has that. Why can't we apply that to other schools?
And it's been successful.
And it has been successful.
Travis did an incredible job. I mean, yeah.
So, and I'm not saying that that's going to solve the problem.
Right, right.
But I'm saying that we need to start thinking kind of creatively and putting our teacher hats on. There's nobody that's more creative than a teacher. You both know this, right?
You're like the MacGyver's in life, yeah.
And so we need to start thinking about that in order to, you know, solve some of those problems and get to a point where we can solve some of those problems. We can't stop people from coming.
Right, right.
You know, and.
Well, Pete Melfi might be able to.
The billboard, like if we're gonna judge the billboard on what happened after the billboard.
Right. We saw a decrease.
Epic fail. Epic fail. I mean, I love the billboard. I thought it was appropriate and much needed. But if we judge by the people that came here after the billboard went up.
Too pretty, Pete. You made it too pretty.
Pete, you're a good looking woman. That's all I'm gonna say. So one of those, he was talking about the growth, class size amendment changes this year.
Right.
I mean, so Floridians voted in 20 some years ago that we want to class size, give a certain number of students per class.
Right.
That all goes away this year. I'm assuming that's the legislature's way of trying to deal with this increase in the number of students.
Yes, but I think it's important to consider that it, it does go away, but the school district is still going to do their best to honor class size, right? We're not, the school district is not going to, and so, and I think another way to look at this, and know, as a teacher, I know this. We were one of the only school districts to implement associate teachers when the class size amendment rule started. Only one, right? We spent more money to have associate teachers so that we could, so that we could handle when we had an overflow classroom. Other school districts just decided to not honor class size amendment. So there's other school districts out there that the fact that class size amendment is going away. This doesn't affect them whatsoever because they haven't been honoring class size amendment anyway.
Anyway, yeah.
So knowing that there is going to be a change, we, we know, you know, there's probably not likely going to be as many associate teachers. Or let's say, for example, specifically kindergarten through third grade. The class size amendment says that there should be no more than 18 students in a classroom. And as soon as you go over that 18th student, in the past, our school district has hired an associate teacher. And then that has become like an overflow classroom, right? So that 19th student triggers it.
Right.
Now, what we're dealing with is the 19th student is not going to necessarily trigger a associate teacher being hired. But once we get to a point where the class is over full, then there's still going to be another teacher that's going to be hired. They're not going to be overloading elementary school classrooms with, and then the district needs to look at how we're going to solve those problems. But they're not going to be overloading the classrooms. They're just having to change the way that we look at it. And I think that's a big thing.
One of the things, and just thinking about how long you've taught, 20 years. So when you first started, there were no smartphones in classes.
There were no smartphones.
There were no smartphones. Phones were dumb. They were so much smarter.
Well, they were large. They were like a phone booth.
They were, they were.
That was where Superman changed, right?
How have you seen that change, the, the students today?
So I can tell you how I've seen the change as a teacher and I can see, tell you how I see the change as a parent, right? So I have to say, in all honesty, the smartphone situation has not impacted me as much at the elementary school level as it has at the middle school level and the high school level.
So is that where we need to catch it more?
Well, I don't necessarily know that. I think that we have implemented some small changes that are helpful. I think, you know, and I'm gonna applaud St. Augustine High School this past year. We had an exchange student this year. I was actually a high school mom this year. We had an exchange student from Argentina. So she was at St. Augustine High. And they had to take their smartphones and they had to put them in like a shoe organizer at the beginning of the classroom.
Huge thing now, yeah.
And it was effective, you know, and we, we do need to consider those things. As a teacher, there are certain things, I think, that is not necessarily happening at school with smartphones. But it's happening maybe at home or on the school bus, you know, where kids have access more. And so that's where it's impacted me a little bit more is that the kids have open access to things all of the time. They have information constantly being flooded at them because they have these smartphones. But in school, while I'm teaching, I haven't had the impact like middle school and high school.
Technology is inevitable. It's definitely gonna be here no matter what. How would you incorporate that into classrooms? Is that something that's more blanketed or is that something that's gonna flow?
Well, I feel like that's something that we already do.
Okay.
And it's ever changing.
Yeah.
Cause technology is ever changing, right? So we, there's a ton of teachers that are already incorporating technology. And if you look at the law regarding smartphones in Florida right now, law is smartphones can be used for academic and educational purposes. So as long as you're following the law, you know, that, I think that's an important thing to consider that we can use our, you know, there's, there's a bunch of apps out there. There's Quizlet and there's, gosh, I can't even think of all of them at the top of my head. And also I have some.
But approved apps essentially.
But approved apps that you can use in class to promote education.
Cool, awesome.
So let's do that. Let's utilize that and kids enjoy it. And then it's not like they're, you know, getting all of the technology removed from them.
Meeting kids where they're at. I think it's so important.
Exactly.
So on that technology, right? So the personal technology of the kids is one thing. And, and this is gonna sound a little jaded, so I'm trying to, to put this and frame it correctly.
Here we go.
No, no, you, you have certain areas of this county where you have what Davy described earlier, that big heart and parents get involved and you've got great PTOs. And so those schools have access to a lot of things that are bought and purchased through the PTO.
Right.
But you have other schools that don't have that level of involvement or don't have that level of financial support. And those schools struggle, right? So you could walk into some of the schools in the southern district and there's not a smart board in every single classroom.
Title one, my babies. I love them.
There is smart boards in, in classrooms where the parents, and, and look, I'm, I'm not in any way saying that the parents should not get involved and do that. I think it's great. It's just how do you make sure there's not a disparity between one part of the county and another part?
Good question.
I agree with you 100%. You know, my, both of my kids are in the south part of the county.
Love that.
We live in the south part of the county. And I know what, what that's like. I work at a title one school. I've always worked at a title one school. And so I think again, that has a lot to do with looking at where we are financially. Making sure that we have equity amongst all of the schools, making sure that the money is being delivered the right way. Tapping into those partnerships, making sure that the schools that are, that do not have the access to those resources are, have a voice that, you know, you're, you're saying, we're gonna fund them the same way. Now, one of the things that does help this, which is, you know, it's like a double edged sword, is those title, title one schools do receive additional funding, right? And that can be used in the operating budget for those types of things. Capital money actually can also be used for capital outlay money can also be used for technology. So we just have to really look at it and be financially responsible. We have to make sure that it's being dispersed.
Yeah. We're, we're one of the wealthiest counties in the state of Florida.
We are.
We're in the top five of that. And we have school districts that are in phenomenal locations or schools that are, that have great, like I said, support. The ability, people that have made enough money that can donate back. But we still have schools in St. John's County that are blue collar schools that need a lot more help.
Well, and I'm gonna go back to what I talked about is creative, looking at how we get students into those schools in a creative way, right? So making those schools more diverse. And I'm not talking about diverse in like socioeconomic, well, I'm talking about like socioeconomic diversity, right?
Absolutely. I know Gregory's one.
How do we, how do we entice people to come down to those schools? Do we change how that school is, you know, what? I'm gonna, let me give an example. The best way that I feel like I can say it is, I grew up in Miami. For high school, I went to a magnet school. My, and the way that magnet schools worked in, in Miami where you had to apply, it was very much like our academies. The school that I went to was two bus rides and a train ride away from my house, right? It was, it was a far, far distance. But it had a very balanced makeup of kids from all over Miami. And it was a specialized center. I went to, it's called Mast Academy Maritime and Science Technology is, is where I went to school. And so because it was specialized, you got kids from all over the place. And if we start looking at our schools in that way and, and trying to think outside of the box, we can make sure there's more equity.
Well, and that's how Murray and Webster got a lot of that diversity in what I would say is the eighties and nineties. Because they had. Because they had higher advanced programs and, and, and they changed the makeup and diversity of those schools.
Right. Well, and I, and, and again, I'm not saying that's a solution to the problem, but that's one step in thinking about ways that we can solve the problem and help the problem.
When I worked for Inc. and I got to see a lot of the different title one schools, which is the Yed Foundation for those out there.
And it was What does it do, Davey?
It, well, it provides academic programs and resources to teachers and students so that they don't have to reach into their pockets, which is incredible. So I'd worked a lot with title one, like Osceola. There was a farm to table project that we started with the Sato Life. It was incredible. And it was basically get, um, getting farmers to come in and like teaching kids how to grow produce, how to cook it, how to create it. And you could just see the creativity. And which I, when I, when you put your teacher hat on, which I think is, is amazing, is because you get creative with these things.
Right.
Title one schools are like their own island, but they're an island of opportunities out there. And just to kind of light, put the light on in the classroom and kind of change things, the paradigm for a lot of kids out there.
Well, and I think another thing to think of too is, is, you know, those partnerships, partnerships with, with the Yed Foundation and with Inc. and with other, um, you know, I, I know you guys have talked about this a little bit, um, in the past and, and maybe you don't know, but Sing Out Loud.
Oh, yeah.
You know, through, um, through the St. Augustine Amphitheater, which is actually
It's a great.
St. Johns County Cultural Events Inc. now, but
I didn't know that.
We need to turn this up. People don't realize this.
Let me talk to you about this. So, um, I had the opportunity to sit on, basically it was the advisory council to the county commission for the St. Augustine Amphitheater in Ponte Vedra Concert Hall.
So cool.
So for about a year and a half, I sat on this committee and we went through the budget and we went through, um, ways that we could help the amphitheater and the concert hall become more agile and more flexible. And how could they, how could they expand to help better our community, right? And so that led to now I sit as the secretary on the board for the St. Johns County Cultural Events Inc. One of the things that they do, not only to benefit economic impact for St. Johns County, but through Sing Out Loud, um, they provide charitable donations to different organizations. This past year, $70,000 went to St. Johns County Public Schools for instruments, to put instruments in schools. Sebastian Middle School has the only, has the only orchestra in every single school. And they provided string instruments for that orchestra. So thinking about those kinds of partnerships and, and different community partnerships and working with people, that can help us create ways that we can provide those opportunities for equity in our schools. It really is about working together and working with, you know, everyone in our community.
And one of the kind of the hot topics is new teachers' salary versus existing teachers, veteran teachers. New teachers get pretty good bump when they get hired. Now the older, some of the older teachers are sort of, and they're your veteran teachers who've been around a long time, right? So you have kind of two thoughts. One, well, maybe we need younger teachers and we don't need as many veterans. And the other is, hey, we don't really wanna lose these teachers that have been here a long time that are so good at what they do. So how do you, how do you?
So let's start with just new teacher salary needed to be increased. Starting teacher salary, you know, needed to be increased point blank. That is what needed to happen because new teachers could not afford to live in St. Johns County. They still kind of can't afford to live in St. Johns County. And then, and when that first happened, you're right, veterans' teachers' salaries, my salary, didn't really go anywhere. It stayed the same. I think the county is working towards remedying that, but it's going to be a slow process. And I think that, you know, teachers do need an advocate who has gone through it and is going through it to remedy that. But ultimately, here's the thing. We do need to look at that operating budget and make sure that money is being spent in the right place.
Right.
We need to make sure that the money is going directly to the students and directly to the teachers.
Right.
And so it really is about looking at it responsibly and making sure that we are providing new teachers with a salary that allows them to live here and start here and work in St. Johns County and that veteran teachers are supported and provided for and can continue to live and work in the county that they teach.
And make them feel special because they are veterans and they're incredible.
Believe me, I, I understand this, you know, 100% because I am one of those teachers who, in the beginning, I was like, wait, what's happening right now? I've been here for 20 years and, you know, and, and there was, and I'm not gonna lie. There was a few years where a new teacher was making the same salary that I was making. And I was like, or just slightly, you know, I was making slightly more than them. We need to remedy that.
Yeah.
But, you know, it is a process and it just, it's, you have to make sure that you're looking at everything. You know, we can't make the money come out of nowhere, right?
So for some of our listeners who don't know, right, St. Johns County is again, one of the highest rated counties in the state for, for the school system. But we're not the highest paying and we're not even the highest paying in this region.
Right.
So that has to, I mean,
Right.
We talked before the show, Flagler County is paying teachers more money than St. Johns County.
They are.
And so we, we, I mean, and it also costs less to live in Flagler County. So for the first time in a long time where teachers would say, well, I wanna go to St. Johns County because of the type of students that are there and the opportunities that are there and it's a great school system. Now they're looking at going, well, for financial reasons, I'm gonna go teach in Flagler County because it's less expensive to live there. I don't have to drive into St. Johns County and I'm gonna get paid more.
But there's not as many schools in Flagler County though either, right?
No, and you do have to look at it a little bit differently, right? I, so here's the thing, I, I started my career in, in Flagler County.
No way!
I taught in Flagler County for eight years before I moved to St. Johns County.
Oh my goodness, I didn't know that.
And it's very different there. It's, it's very different. The infrastructure there, very different. So the schools are huge.
Yeah.
When I, the second school that I taught at, which I was there for six years, when it was built, we had, I wanna say 1,400 students at an elementary school and it was K5.
Wow.
At one point, we grew to 1,800 students. I was the lead teacher for kindergarten there and we had 15 kindergarten classrooms.
That's more kids than were in my college.
That, and that's more kids. I mean, 15 kindergarten classes is more than we have teachers all at Catalinas Elementary, right? So the way that they have been able to do that in Flagler is different because they have less schools. Therefore, less schools means less administrators. That also means district office is smaller, right? So there is, it's a completely different infrastructure. So it's kind of like comparing apples and oranges because the other, the other side to that is you're working at a school where you don't know everybody, right? You're working at a school where you don't have as many administrators. So if you're having issues in your classroom, there's not always there, somebody there to get to you. So there are problems that come with that as well.
Okay.
Now, the problem of the difference in pay still needs to be solved regardless. Well, I mean, it, it does because our school district needs to be paying teachers a livable, comfortable wage.
Right.
Right?
But how do you do that? Do you like rob Peter to pay Paul? Like, how do we look at the budget?
Also
We raise your taxes, Davey. Just yours. No one else's but yours.
I, I'm not saying, you know, I, I think it's, it's a, it's kind of a global issue too though, right? So, or at least a state issue. So, this is happening in more counties than just ours. Teachers, and this is happening in the entire nation.
But you don't hear little kids anymore like, I wanna be a teacher when I grow up. Like, where is that? I want that back.
And part of that is, you know, because of where we've gotten with education and it is underpaid across the board, no matter what. So what do we need to do? We need to, again, partner with our communities that are surrounding us. We need to partner with other school districts in the, you know, in the state. We need to lobby for more money and, and like I said, boots on the ground effort. Like, we need to find ways to do that. So it does start locally. It starts with us looking at our budget and being responsible and, you know, making sure that money is going in the right places. And then when we say, now that all the money is going to the right places, how do we take, take it a step further and bring more in?
Yeah.
But it, I, it's a, it's a long process. It's not an easy thing to do.
Yeah. Like, oh my gosh, we don't need paper towels. Let's just, you know, give it, right, yeah.
And I think teachers, we, we all, every industry, uh, has taken on more responsibility over the last 20 years. Technology's part of that because you have the ability to do more things. So you're expected to do more things. But, but teacher burnout, right, that, that is a huge issue that we face today. Because teachers have a, like, if they had a list that was 10 items they had to do 20 years ago when you started, it's now probably a list of about 40 items.
Well, and, and I think that, I think you just made the point because, you know, teacher compensation is one thing. Teachers do need to be compensated more. Everybody agrees on that. Nobody can say, oh, teachers make enough money. No one ever says that.
Never hear that.
But there is something to that, you know? Teacher retention is definitely based on how teachers are supported. We need to look at accountability practices. What can we take off teachers' plates? How can we streamline our procedures? How can we, um, you know, how can we make sure that teachers are feeling supported? Teachers who are supported by their administrators, teachers who are supported by their students, their families that they represent, that plays a huge role in teacher retention. And understanding that is, is very important because teachers are gonna stay where they feel happy and supported. And teachers that are happy and feel supported also have classrooms that have great learning environments and good climate. I think that's, that's really important to remember. I think another part of that is that we need to look at data. We need to look at schools that have low teacher turnover. We need to look at, um, what those administrator, administrators are doing to support their teachers that are making them wanna stay. We need to look at what are the practices in those schools that are making teachers happy and wanna stay. We also need to make sure that, um, we are tapping into that and then using what they're doing and applying it to schools where we have more turnover.
Right. What are some of those commonalities that make, make you think that, that administrators do? Does this make you feel like a community or a family? Does that make them stay?
School climate is the biggest thing.
Okay.
You know, if you have a, a good school climate where the teachers feel supported, where administration is involved, is present, is active, um, is connected to the students, then that makes a huge difference. The, you know, the best administrators that I've worked for, that's been their number one thing. Building a community environment and a school, a positive school climate.
Yes.
Um, and, and supporting, supporting teachers, supporting educators, saying, you know, you're a professional. I appreciate what you do, um, and let's work together. So that, that's a huge part of retention for teachers.
What do you think about mental health resources for teachers? I mean, is that, is that a big thing out there?
Um, resources for teachers for themselves or to provide for students?
Like, I worry about them because there's just so much burnout. They're so exhausted all the time. I mean, like, we just talked about epic behavioral healthcare.
Right.
Like partnering with a local agency like that and getting those kind of resources.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna be 100% honest with you. If, if teachers hear you need to practice more self-care more often, they would probably wanna like strangle it.
Right, right, absolutely, yeah.
They hate that term, um, because, you know, a lot of times it's like, well, self-care, but then they're not given the opportunity to take care of themselves, right? So, but again, that, I think that's the biggest thing. If we focus on what is, you know, building positive school climate, making sure that teachers feel supported, streamlining accountability, giving them more planning time.
Yeah.
Giving them the time to actually do their jobs, which is teaching, then that mental health component kind of falls into place.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
The other, nurses in schools.
Nurses in schools.
So one of the things I heard the other day is that they're cutting back on nurses in schools and having them handle more schools. So, comments on that.
I think, I think there is some misinformation and miscommunication out there, a little bit about nurses in schools. Now, it is true that, um, the money that pays for nurses in schools is actually even separated from the operating budget. It's, it's separated from the school staffing budgets. The majority of counties surrounding us, in order to deal with that, have cut nurses out entirely. There's a lot of school districts that just don't have school nurses anymore. And then it falls on the teachers and it falls on front office staff to deal with nurses in schools.
Ay yi yi, I can hear that a mile away.
There are schools where, that had multiple school nurses, like some of those KA schools, some of the larger schools, they had maybe two school nurses. A lot of times, um, when a nurse was out, you would have a substitute school nurse come in. And that is primarily what's going away. My understanding, and this is what I've been told after sitting in, in those stakeholders meetings, is there still will be one school nurse at every single school in St. Johns County. You're gonna have one at least, right? The other part of that too is, you know, nurses are limited into what they can do. So in emergent situations, we are still having to rely upon our first responders and, you know, emergency professionals in order to provide that support. So that's another part of, you know, making sure we're partnering with the county for school safety. Making sure that, you know, we have those safety procedures in place, um, because that's just as important.
And you touched on it. My next comment was school safety. So if you wanna kind of feed into that, and I, and I, I'll let you answer before I comment. Cause I just wanna kind of, where, where you think we are with school safety.
So I personally, I think we're in a very good place. You know, I think our sheriff's office has worked really, really hard, um, since what happened at Marjory Stoneman Douglas to, um, to make sure that we're safe. Again, costs a lot of money to do that and has put some financial strain on us. However, the, the sentegics operations that they've put into place this past year, like, I don't know, have you been in any of the schools or seen the teachers wearing the badges? So there's a little white badge every teacher has to wear.
Yeah.
You press it and it calls emergency services. I never, and I'm smack dab in the middle of downtown St. Augustine at Catalinas. And we are, you know, we're centrally located, we're right there. I never feel unsafe at my school when it comes to that. Because of the measures that the school district has put in place and worked with our sheriff and our sheriff's office to do that. Now, are there some issues at school safety at every school? Absolutely. And it's important to be aware of those. It's important to make sure that we are providing the support for new teachers so that they know how to deal with, you know, school safety and, and when those things arise. But, um, I think it's important to note that we do have really safe schools because of that partnership that we have.
And I wanted you to answer. I, I think that the, um, the, all three agencies, the sheriff and, and the city of St. Augustine, the city of St. Augustine Beach, all do a great job. I think some of it is just having a presence in front of the schools. You rarely ride by during the school year and you do not see, uh, a presence there. And I know in a lot of the schools, there's, there's resource officers that are there that are sheriff's department or city of St. Augustine. And I think that helps to stop a lot of those problems.
Yeah.
And, and I applaud everybody from the school system on down to addressing, hey, we live in a different time. This is not something we had to worry about 40 and 50 years ago, but it is something we have to worry about today.
Right.
And so taking those actions, I think, has, has, has made our schools a lot safer.
Well, and it's pretty amazing, um, if you haven't had the opportunity to get briefed on what they've actually implemented in the schools with, uh, you know, the security systems and the camera systems. At the sheriff's office, they have like a command center where they can pull up every single school, every like nook and cranny of the school. I really was only privy to this because I sat on our, our sack, school sack committee and they invited, um, parents and stakeholders from our sack committee. I didn't go to the meeting, but they came back and they told us all about it.
Oh, cool.
At the sheriff's office. But basically, they have a command center where they can tap in every single school and see what's happening in real time.
It's incredible, yeah.
It's pretty, it is pretty incredible.
I want Pete Melfi to know, had he been a high school student today, the leaving after first period and coming back whenever he wanted to would not have happened.
No.
The teacher said, if you don't wanna be here, then don't be here. So he just left.
He took, he took the teacher literally.
Right!
Which is what Pete is known to do. But we're just saying, Pete, you, you would have been in a lot of trouble young man.
He definitely would not have gotten away with it.
No, yeah, right. So, part of your mission is cultivating meaningful partnerships. I read that today.
Yeah.
And I wanna, I wanted you to highlight a little bit about cultivating meaningful partnerships with parents. What does that look like for you?
So, I mean, I think this is, this is a big thing. I, I'm a parent.
Yeah.
Right? I want to make sure that parents are represented on the school board. I wanna make sure, you know, and as a parent, I want somebody who's actively parenting to be making and guiding those decisions. I, you know, and I think that's, that's a big, that's I, you know, and I think that's, that's a big, that's a big reason why I wanted to do this. I want the best for my, my children. Everything that I've done, you know, moving in this direction has been because of my kids. I'm a mom first. And so I think it is about communication. It is about transparency. It is about getting parents involved. I really believe that students are more, most successful when they have a team of people advocating for them. So that means you've got your teacher, your parent, your, you know, your administrator, other students. When, when they have a team behind them, they are going to be the most successful. So that means open communication. That means working with parents, listening to what their concerns are. Most of the time, they're the same concerns that I have.
And a lot of this position is about listening.
It is.
It's going to be hard because you're going to come up with a lot of conflict. How are you going to do that conflict resolution? Like, what are some great strategies that you have? You're like, you know what? I can see both sides of the fence here.
Well, you know, I mean, I'm a teacher. Conflict resolution is kind of my thing, right? Especially because at elementary school, you know, that's pretty much half of what you deal with all day is conflict resolution. So, you know, I-
Have you seen this show?
Right, I know.
That's, I, I mean, that's basically, you know, that's what we do. I, I think building relationships is key in that. Trust and having that relationship and, and listening, actively listening, engaging in what people have to say. I know that as a parent, I want to be heard. You know, so that's, that's the biggest, that's the, that's the biggest factor. Is just making sure that you are looking at everything objectively. And ultimately, I know that I want what's best for students. I know that parents want what's best for their children. And putting students above everything else to make those decisions for our school district is really the most important thing. Everybody wants the same thing.
Love it.
I, I do too. And you, I think one of my neighbors is in most of your pictures.
Oh, really? Oh, wait, Kat.
Yes.
She's one of my dearest friends.
I'm looking at it and I'm going, I know her, I know her, I know her.
A lot of my pictures. No, she, so she has been my co-sack chair for the past five years now. And then also my co-robotics coach for the past, well, I think I, I talked her into doing it two years ago. I've been doing it for a while.
So what's the neatest thing your students have done in robotics?
Yeah, so let's talk about it. This is like-
Did you see how happy the nerd in her just goes?
Let me start with saying, I, I did not start coaching robotics because I knew anything about STEM education or robotics.
Really?
Zero.
Oh, my goodness.
Zero, zero. I started coaching robotics because my son Grayson was in fifth grade. He was super interested in Legos. He was super interested in coding. We didn't have a current robotics coach at the school. And I said, and he was like, Mom, I just, I really want to do this. And I was like, okay, let's, let's do this.
I mean, it's a culture. It's a thing.
It's a, it's a whole thing. So that's why I started coaching the robotics team and then he's now in middle school. He, you know, and I've been doing it for the, the past four years. This year was my proudest year because our team, our little tiny team of nine at my title one school competed against every single robotics team in the entire school district. And we won the champions award, which is the first place award for the whole entire school district. And so that was super, like just my proudest moment. And the, the craziest part about this was that team, they weren't particularly proficient at coding. It wasn't their best thing. I had two really solid coders in the whole team of nine. And they did a lot of the teaching of the others, the students, but it wasn't their favorite thing. They were just the most creative kids I have ever met in my life.
I love that.
And they were creative and they were caring and they worked together. They were great communicators. It was just overall, it was such an amazing experience. We went to the regional competition in Gainesville. We had to beg, borrow and steal for money to get there because I had a lot of students that, you know, they wouldn't have necessarily been able to afford to spend the night in Gainesville and, and do that. So we, we did work really hard to get it funded for them and it was just, you know, overall an amazing experience.
Cool experience. Can you see those kids who would never see like Gainesville ever? You know what I mean? Like just open up, like wow, what an opportunity.
And just have, for their parents to be able to be involved, like everybody came over and we, you know, and it was such a bonding experience for the kids. And I, I don't think, I wouldn't trade that for anything in the world.
So what did the robot do? Did it clean the house? Like, what did it do?
I wish.
That's all right. She's the captain so that she can, she can get an assistant, a robot.
If I could get a robot to actually really truly clean the house or get my kids to code a robot to actually truly clean the house, I, I would make a bazillion dollars and I'd give it to all the teachers. But no, it just, the, it's through Lego. So they have a specific, they have four components. And they have to code a robot to complete specific missions in a two-minute time period and they get runs. But that's only 25% of the actual overall score. So then 20, 25% is an innovation project. So this year, my students, they came up with basically an app that will connect kids from all over the world based on their interests. And so the things that they like. And they created a commercial for it, produced their own commercial. They got really involved in Adobe Express, which is a, is a program that, that we use.
If you say so.
It's so good, yes.
It was a program that we used.
He didn't do Legos, he did Lincoln Logs, yeah.
They taught me all about it and-
We had rocks, Davy, we had rocks.
25% of it is their actual design of their robot. And then the other 25% is what they call gracious professionalism. So teamwork.
Nice.
How, how they worked together.
I love that. That's so cool.
It was, it was an amazing, amazing experience. So, but yeah, I honestly, that I think is what calls me to do this because I started robotics for my son Grayson. For those, I know Davy knows this, I dance in the Nutcracker for my daughter Sloan. You know, we, every, we, five years ago, my husband and I were asked to be in the party scene at the St. Augustine Ballet. She is super involved. It takes up a lot of her time. And we were like, okay, so this is how we spend time with her. During Christmas time.
Pete was asked to be the rat king.
This is how we spend time, we spend time with her.
Tight cats.
And honestly, I, you know, I needed less convincing than Dan. Dan had to be coached a little bit more. They had to convince him that he wasn't going to have to wear tights.
I would pay to see Dan in tights. Wouldn't you? We could do a school fundraiser for that. We could get enough money for a high school if we have that.
I love it.
But because of her, like that's why we dance. And then that's what led me to join their nonprofit board. So, and, and this is what I'm talking about with partnerships, you know? Opening those doors and participating in those things, engaging parents to do these things. That's how we can cultivate that partnership and making, make it meaningful for everybody who's involved.
That is the key to our community.
Last question is the toughest one we're going to ask.
Yeah.
How many times did Dan step on your feet during the party scene dance?
Oh, that's a good question.
Not my feet, my dress. You have to wear like this big giant dress with all the hoops and all the things. There were definitely a few times that I went to walk forward and I got stuck because Dan was standing on, on the dress.
But he never let you fall?
No, he's never let me fall. And then to add, you know, the director of St. Augustine Ballet, he very much overestimates our dancing ability because neither one of us have any background in dancing or ballet or anything. But this year we were in their spring show of Snow White and he incorporated a lift. And so Dan and I had to actually practice the lift.
How hard it was it to lift him? Was it hard to get Dan up in the air? I'm just asking.
Impossible. We ended up having to switch roles. But that was, yeah, so you know, it's, but it's fun. I, you know, that's, you make it fun. You're engaged with your kids and, and that's really what it's all about because, you know, I'm a mom first.
I love that.
You only have a little bit of time with them and then they go away. All the way to Australia if you're not careful.
Listening to Taylor Swift. Got it in there.
Listen, well, thank you very much for coming in. We really appreciate it. It was short notice for you today. We had someone cancel you. Agreed to come in and we're grateful for that. Good luck along the rest of this political way and, and we wish you the best. And if you have, you want to go check out, Bethany Hilbert has a webpage. What is the webpage?
It is Bethany Hilbert for schoolboard.com. I also, if you're able to put it up anywhere, there's a link tree that I sent to you. That actually has a link to the webpage, the Facebook page, the Instagram page, if you want more information, want to support, even just want to research. I mean, I encourage everybody to research the candidates. Make an informed decision, get out and vote.
If you have questions, contact Bethany.
Yeah.
If you have questions, listen. Having, having been a candidate and then talking to people who are like, well, I could never get ahold of anyone and I don't know who's running. Right now, everyone that's running will come and talk to you. They'll come and have coffee with you. They're looking for every single vote. So if you just will reach out to them, they will engage with you and they will talk to you. Once they get elected, they got a job to do. It gets a little harder.
I do have a little present for you guys that I brought. Little robot pens.
That is awesome.
This is Bob. He's Bob because my kids name everything Bob. They love, they love Bob. And our robotics team, we were called the Combobulators or the Bobs. But I have to give a shout out to Zach Thomas, who is a dear friend of mine. I've been friends with him for 25 years. And he's been really helpful and supportive in this whole thing. Actually, everyone has been so supportive and humbling, but his idea was the little, was the robot pen because that's part of our logo.
This is the coolest pin ever. I love it.
We wanted to get away from the apple or the pencil or the chalkboard and the robot is really representative of me. So, thank you guys.
So cool.
Thank you very much. Good luck the rest of the way.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you tune in tomorrow, there's some show that is on, I think in the morning. I'm not quite sure. They do take days off whenever they want to in the middle of the week, but I think they will be here tomorrow for Wednesday. And then there's an amazing show in the middle of the day.
It is. We have Coach Cooper coming on tomorrow. There's a little bit of tea for everybody. Very excited. Yeah. Great talk.
Awesome, awesome person. And, and we'll be back tomorrow night. Clay, you're back, right?
I am.
You've got what, three nights of detention this week?
The rest of the week, yeah.
Yeah, detention every night this week. Eli Moore will be with us tomorrow and we may have another special guest. We'll let you know. Have a great night. Thank you all.
Bye, everybody.